Well, hello, everybody. Welcome back and Happy New Year. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We start with an invocation, which we observe by moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willett.
Here.
All present.
And first up, we've got some minutes that need to be approved.
Madam Mayor, before I move on the minutes, just need to read a correction into the record. We'd like to correct the minutes of the noon meeting on December 17th, 2024. Please let the record reflect that on the vote to approve the substitute motion on ORD-35-34, Councilmember Willetts voted no, and Councilmember Corliss voted yes. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the corrected minutes for the regular meeting on December 17th, and the minutes for December 17th joint meeting, and the minutes for December 23rd, 2024.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Do you have other discussion? Clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great. And next up, we've got the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that RES-7-25 be removed from the consent agenda. Staff needs to do additional outreach with the involved parties.
Without objection.
Madam Mayor, Council President, which one was that? Which number?
Number six. Number six. Are you still good? Okay, great.
Okay, no objection. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we've got nothing on first, second, or third, but we do have one ordinance on first, second, and third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that all rules of council interfering with immediate consideration of ORD 1-25 be suspended, that the portions of Idaho Code 50902 requiring an ordinance to be read on three different days, twice by title, and once in full be dispensed with, and the records show it has been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion? Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-1-25, an ordinance submitting Boise City Code Title I, Chapter 6, Section 2, to clarify council president duties in the absence of the mayor, Boise City Code Title I, Chapter 6, Section 3, to add fiscal year 2026 to 2031 salaries for mayor and city council, to increase the daily amount paid to a city council member for acting as mayor, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and provide an effective date of January 1, 2025.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD 1-25 be approved. Can you, 1-25, just 20? 1-25-24.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to voice my opinion here. I appreciate the effort that Councilmember Hallie Burton and that the staff put into this work. And this salary discussion, I think, became much more complicated than any of us expected it to be. But I wanted to just give some insight to my lack of support for the ordinance that's now on the table. I had initial concerns on the original ordinance, which was further supported with discussions with constituents since the proposal first became public. The city council makes about $27,000 per year, which is far from a living wage, and barely minimum wage when broken down by the hours that I put into this role. I do understand that to be prohibitive for many people in their consideration of this type of public service. I, for example, also maintain a full-time corporate job to make it work, and that's not an option for everybody. A 9% raise for city council is about $2,500 per year. It's not enough to put my full-time work into this position, unfortunately. And until there's an overhaul in the structure of this position, I don't see this making that difference in that kind of accessibility. I can say with near certainty that my constituents are not receiving 12% or even 9% raises this year or next year. It doesn't sit right with me in my role of fiscal responsibility to double down by taking back a decision that was made during COVID in a time that we can still say the economy is still uncertain and that budgets are still tight. So that's why I will not be supporting the motion tonight.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate that this is a complicated discussion. One of the things I think that sometimes gets lost in the discussion is that this is making up for the lack of raises that council and the mayor's office received that we took decline during COVID, and during that time offered base wages and merit wage raises to staff. There are people who have asked, are we offering these same increases to the rest of staff? We offered more increases to the rest of staff during that period of time. And so this is not actually making up for that cost of living. It's getting a little bit closer. But during that same period of time, staff averaged 3.7% raises per year, while council averaged 1.7. This does not bring council back up in line. It just gets a little bit closer and covers some of those cost of living expenses. I understand that salaries are always a challenging thing, and I think that it would be good for council to examine ways to make this process easier, easier to understand, but for all the council members, for the public going forward, and trying to do what we can to make sure that we're treating it the same way that we treat cost of living adjustments for staff. And so that might be something that a future council would consider, would be evaluating how we can make this process directly in line with how we would do staff. And I think that that's a larger conversation in the future.
Madam Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, for your comments. I just want to take a little responsibility for us being in a situation where the right size is larger than I would probably like, and others may like as well. When I first got onto council, that was two years ago. That was the last time that this got brought up, is us possibly considering it. And I had been on council for about 30 seconds, and I was like, don't really want this to be the first thing I do here. So shot that down, and it didn't really get picked back up until now. And so we're in a situation where that right size is even bigger. My commitment to council, even though I do plan on voting no today, my commitment to council is to working to try to make this, get us in a situation where we're not trying to do a large right size every five years, so trying to bring this more in line with how we set other city budgets. So when we do a budget ordinance and a fee ordinance, and trying to do a pay ordinance at the same time, so it's consistent with our other budget-making schemes. We do have some constraints around that, given statutory restrictions on when we can make pay changes prior to elections, when they're effective after elections, and so forth, that we'll have to work around. But my commitment would be trying to get us into a better situation, so we're not in a weird right-size situation where it's more of a political question of what we want to do, rather than, does this make sense? And I think what has been proposed is pretty consistent with what I've seen elsewhere in the mayor's salary under this. I think the mayor would still be making less than the mayors of Spokane and Salt Lake City. It's pretty consistent from a market-based perspective. I think the reason for my no vote today is I think 9% is a little tougher sell for my constituents, for same reasons Councilmember Sted mentioned. But I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, and my commitment to council is making it so we don't get in a situation like this again.
Madam Mayor.
We'll go with, let's go with Councilmember Morales since he's online, and then we'll have Councilmember Willetts.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supporting this motion because it essentially realigns expected council and mayor salaries to what was expected before. I know it's a tough conversation. I think whatever percentage it is, voting on your own salary increase is always going to feel a little weird as, you know, as a constituent. But, you know, and I think after seeing those initial numbers meant an initial 12% to 13% increase, you know, I was in favor of drawing that back quite a bit, but I appreciate Councilmember Hallie Burton's persistence to find some more middle ground there. He's been working on this since before I've been on council. And I believe the intent really is to ensure we're keeping up with the cost of living, and compensating our mayor, the CEO of our city at a level that makes sense, directing department heads with increasing salaries as well. I'm really proud our city takes care of our employees. You know, my first, I guess you'd say, political job was an unpaid intern at the legislature, and at the time in 2006, state employees hadn't seen raises for quite a few years. And they got a big 5% or 6% raise for state employees that year that was so huge. And I think, you know, not getting to that point is really, really important. I think year after year, I've been proud of how we're taking care of our staff. And believe that matching that same support at council and mayor level makes sense. And just to be clear, this ordinance gets us close to matching recent staff salary increases, but not completely, and I'm okay with that. So just to highlight, had the COVID council and mayor salary ordinance of the 0% raise in 2021 and 2% raises after been reversed, and we were continuing to match staff base increases, the mayor's salary in 2026 would be 173,256. Under the ordinance being voted on tonight, it'll be $171,195. So it doesn't realign with staff increases completely, even though that is a big 9% number. But it really is in line with what was expected several years ago. And so, you know, while it may be big now because of the changes that happened because of COVID, it really would have been business as usual otherwise. And unlike the staff increases during COVID, where we went, where the prior council went back and ensured that anything lost during those freezes was restored, that's not the case here. Those are foregone salaries eventually. And so, you know, for me, you know, I do tend to read the Boise Dev Facebook comment sections, and just want to make sure that folks know that this is not quite matching staff salaries, but our staff are being compensated. And this is just kind of correcting us not making this correction during COVID like we did for staff. And obviously, I think staff were the most important at that time, and this didn't quite get corrected. But I believe that, you know, going further, we should have more conversations. I appreciate some of the language in this ordinance that does support the efforts from our council president as acting mayor. The one thing that I was not aware of outside of councils, how much work our council president and council pro temp put into their weeks for us on council. It is considerable, maybe compared to a council member not in leadership. And I'm very grateful for all of their work. They do a lot behind the scenes to move forward in this, move our city forward. And so I think that's really important. When we look at other cities, we do see maybe some compensation models out there. I'd be curious to look into that a little bit more in the future, but just wanted to call that out there because that is a big deal for a council member that's also working a full-time job to be able to put in all that. So very grateful for all they do as well.
Madam Mayor, thank you. First of all, to Councilmember Hallie Burton, I know that you've put so much work into this, and I appreciate the opportunity that we have to have a discussion about this. I know that, you know, we've all taken a lot of look at it, a lot of time and consideration to look at this. I'll be voting no. I think the increase is too much. I think it's tone-deaf to the economy. And I don't think that the mayor of Boise should make more than the governor of the state of Idaho, and under this proposal, they would. So I'll be voting no.
Madam Mayor. This is a very tough decision, and as Councilmember Morales said, being first time on council, it feels a little odd when you're having an opportunity to vote on salary for your fellow council members and for yourself. I took a look at the work Jimmy Hallie Burton put into this, and we realized why this may be coming across as a race. It is not. It is a cost of living adjustment. And the reality is, is the prices have continued to go up, and this is merely reflecting those adjustments. Unfortunately, we've had to go back a couple of years because I think city council previously, and the mayor did a great job in saying, hey, we're not sure where the budget goes, we're going to drop this down to zero. And now this is a step to catch that up. So bringing salaries up to merely adjust for the cost of living is not a race. It's keeping up with inflation, and it will be having my support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Okay. All right, Clerk, we call the roll?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
No.
Sted.
No.
Willett.
No.
Three in favor, three opposed. Madam Mayor, please cast your vote.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sorry. We're going to move on to new business. We've got two subdivisions first, and what I'll do with these, let me look at the script, just so folks know, I'll check in to see, as we have these, if the applicants of the subdivisions agree with the terms and conditions of the staff report. And if so, let me know. I'll note that for the record, and we can probably move along with these subdivisions. So first, we've got SOS 2410, and David Mosher is here. Lynn is Lynn Vaughn. Oh, hi. Welcome. Good to see you here. And then we don't expect the Neighborhood Association unless, is Judy? I don't see Judy. We don't expect her tonight. Is anybody from the public here to testify on this item? Online? Nope. Okay. Pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a vacation of a plat note from the Skyline subdivision number three, which requires a 25-foot rear yard setback, building setback. The property is located at 5519 North Markcliff Avenue in an R1C zone. Now, seen on this slide, the surrounding area is comprised of a residential neighborhood containing detached, single-family houses. This neighborhood is just south of Chindon Boulevard between Maple Grove and Five Mile Roads. The subject property is located within the Skyline subdivision number three, which was recorded back in 1974. As seen on this slide, the recorded subdivision contains specific building setbacks on the plat. These required setbacks are as follows: a 20-foot front, seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, and a 25-foot rear setback, which is the subject of this vacation request. The subject property is owned R1C, which requires a 15-foot rear yard setback as per the Development Code. The plat note vacation is being requested in order to replace an in-ground pool with a new in-ground pool in the exact same location in the backyard. However, this in-ground pool is located within the subdivision rear yard setback, and thus is being requested to be vacated. With the vacation of the rear yard setback, building setback, note on the plat, the in-ground pool will comply with the Development Code setbacks as per the zoning ordinance and the design standards of the R1C zone. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for David? And for the applicant, are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? All right, for the record, we'll reflect that. I want to confirm that nobody is here to testify on this item. I am going to close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SOS 24-10, a request for vacation of a plat note for Lot 10, Block 8 of Skyline subdivision number three, located at 5519 North Markcliff Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion? Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And next up, we, hi, Matthew, and we've got SUB 2424, Jalen Funk is the applicant. Hi, welcome. And then John Mooney, Barber Valley Neighborhood Association. I don't see John as the Neighborhood Association here. Anybody from the public here to testify on this? Online? All right, I'll check in in the same way. Great. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, the item before you is a preliminary plat for a residential subdivision comprised of nine buildable and two common lots located at 2936 South Broadway on 0.43 acres in the SP1 Harris Ranch specific plan zone. The proposed subdivision complies with the dimensional standards and approval criteria of the Development Code, as well as within the Harris Ranch specific plan for Block SW2 utilizing Block Prototype 11D. The proposal has received approval from the Harris Ranch Review Board and will require approval of a design review application prior to submission of building permits. Shown here is the Block Prototype 11D for Block SW2 as prescribed by the Harris Ranch specific plan for reference, which the preliminary plat closely matches. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Any questions? And the applicant, I'll have the record reflect the applicant's in agreement with terms and conditions of the staff report. Want to confirm? Nobody is here to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing and take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SUB 24-24, preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of nine buildable and two common lots on 0.43 acres located at 2936 South Broadway in the SP1 Harris Ranch specific plan zone.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to thank the applicant for bringing forward a very straightforward project, follows their code, follows the Harris Ranch plan, meets several objectives in our comprehensive plan of making a more walkable, bikeable area. Very easy fit, very easy decision. So thanks for good application coming forward.
Clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, and you're back. Now, we've got, under the public hearing, we have CAR 24-11. For the applicant Rory Hegy, Studio H Architects. Hi. The Central Bench Neighborhood Association isn't expected, but want to confirm that. Nobody is here for this one? All right, I'll kind of follow the same pattern, if that's all right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The application before you is a request to rezone approximately 0.46 acres located at 204 South Eagleson Road from R1C Residential Traditional to R3 Residential Urban. The property is located approximately 150 feet south of Franklin Road and arterial roadway with a bus route. It is also located within two community activity centers. The surrounding area is comprised of a mix of uses with predominantly multifamily and commercial developments to the north and east, zoned R2, R3, MX2, and MX3, and mostly single-family detached dwellings to the south, zoned R1C. The rezone is consistent with the changed circumstances in the area, which has experienced densification through infill development, as highlighted in yellow and orange on the screen. As outlined in the project report, there are multiple goals, principles, and policies within the Comprehensive Plan, Central Bench Neighborhood Plan, and Development Code that support the proposed rezone. The R3 zone is appropriate because it contributes to the transitional zoning designation between the predominantly commercial and multifamily residential uses along the north and east along Franklin Road and the established residential neighborhood that borders the site to the south and west. Thus, it will reinforce the character of the neighborhood by allowing a gradual increase in residential density closer to the arterial roadway. The rezone will also alleviate technical mapping error in that the landlocked parcel in the bottom right corner of the screen is non-buildable because it does not contain street frontage. The rezone will allow these parcels to be consolidated to accommodate the proposed redevelopment of the site containing an assisted living facility. Shown here is a conceptual site plan of the proposed assisted living facility. As was described within the project report, the proposed use, as well as the building, parking, and landscaping layouts, will be subject to design review approval, and therefore not before city council for a decision today. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the rezone, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? And the applicant, you're welcome to come up. If you're in agreement with the recommendation, all right, I'll have that reflected in the record. Nobody is here to testify on this one? Want to confirm again online? Okay, any further questions for staff?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, no questions for staff. I just want to do a quick comment.
I'll have you do that once I've closed the public hearing. Now you may make the comment.
Sorry to jump the guy. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a rezone that's in District 3, and I appreciate this being brought forward because we did have a landlocked parcel that wouldn't have access. And so just good common sense to get this rezone to the R3. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll also add, you know, I think when you make kind of a sweeping overhaul to a policy, as we just did with our modern zoning code last year, there's bound to be kind of things that don't, that fall through the cracks or are overlooked. And I see that, and this is kind of a technical update that should have happened then and didn't because of the way the land was split. So it makes sense to me to move this forward. I also appreciate the project and the use. We have a desperate need for services like this in our community and probably across the country. So looking forward to the project coming to fruition.
I'd be happy to shake a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of CAR 24-11, a request for rezone approximately 0.46 acres from R1C Residential Traditional to R3 Residential Urban, zoning located at 204 South Eagleson Road.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? All right, Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All righty, the next one seems somewhat similar, CAR 24-5. Matthew's still with us. Chad Jones from ALC Architecture. Hi. We do not expect the Vista Neighborhood Association. Want to confirm that? Online? Nope. Anybody here for this one? Online? All right, we'll follow similar suit if that works for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The application before you is a request to rezone approximately 0.68 acres from R1C to MX2 for the subject property located at 3919 West Overland Road. The subject property meets the dimensional standard of the MX2 zone and its existing use. A 2,000-square-foot retail sales establishment is in allowed use within the MX2 zone. The rezone is intended to correct a technical mapping error resolving a residential zoning district that was applied to a previously split zone parcel, as shown here, the previously legacy zoning code, zoning that was consolidated to R1C, and to accommodate an expansion of that existing retail use to approximately 7,500 square feet. The requested zoning designation is compatible with the surrounding area, which is comprised of varying commercial uses to its west, north, and east, and is owned MX2. Shown here is the proposed site plan for the expansion, which is also subject to design review approval, and therefore not before city council for a decision today. As outlined within the project report, there are multiple goals, principles, and policies within the Comprehensive Plan, Central Bench Neighborhood Plan, and Development Code that support the proposed rezone. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the rezone, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Right to the applicant. I'll ask if you're in agreement. I'll write the record reflect that the applicant is in agreement with the recommendation the proposal was presented. Confirm that nobody is here for this? I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of CAR 24-5, a request to rezone approximately 0.68 acres from R1C Residential Traditional to MX2 mixed-use general for property located at 3919 West Overland Road.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'll just add, it's a similar situation as the last one, as you mentioned, and I appreciate the applicant bringing this forward so that we have the opportunity to rezone it appropriately. I hope that we see if there are more of these situations out there. I hope that we continue to see them almost sooner rather than later, so that we can tie it back to that as the, kind of as the catalyst for that, because I think, you know, we don't, when we did that overview, I think the staff did the best they could to look at individual parcels in those new zoning, in the new zones. But certainly, there is some disconnect as we would see on some split properties and things like that. So appreciate the work that's done on this one to write that and look forward to doing more as needed.
Anything further? Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yeah.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, and now we will move on to the last item of the evening, CAR 24-17. David Mosher is joining us. I see Jeff Wardle. Are you presenting tonight? For the applicant? Is the Downtown Neighborhood Association here? Bruce is listed, but anybody else? But online? All right, and I've got the list of folks that are planning on testifying. If I don't call your name and you're still, and you'd like to testify, don't worry about it. Just raise your hand, and I'll ask people if there's multiples of you, just to come up to this front row and sit here and just go one by one, just to move things through efficiently. All good? And then we'll check to see if anybody's online, too. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a modification to a development agreement to reduce the minimum required number of residential units from 100 to 69. This item was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 2nd, and they recommended approval. As seen on this slide, the site is located within the downtown Boise area, which is comprised of a diverse mix of uses, such as residential, office, commercial, educational, park, civic, cultural uses. It is also three, or two blocks east of the St. Luke's Campus and the core downtown areas, three blocks to the west. The subject property was rezoned to C5DDDA, and the overall project use and design was approved in 2020 by the Boise City Council, which includes a mix of developments onsite, a mixed-use development, and a 13-story high building. The DA specifically addressed the project's development standards, such as building height, access, circulation, tree mitigation. Required residential uses, light pollution, and it tied the project back to a conceptual plan. The applicant is now requesting to change one section of the D A to reduce the required minimum required number of residential units from one hundred to sixty nine. No other aspects of developments, height, mass, size, design, or use will change. In addition to this, it will still provide five affordable units onsite. This is the perspective. This protective perspective shows the building's project design, which will not change with this D A modification. The requested change is simple. It will reduce the minimum required number of units on the site. Also, the modification complies with the required findings of the development code as detailed in the project report. In summary, it will not impact the infrastructure required to support the development. And the modification will not impact the surrounding neighborhood. The request will not change the approved building size, height, design, or the or the mixed-use nature of the development. In addition, the modification to the pro or the modification, the project is consistent with the approved conceptual plan within the D A. Finally, the proposed modification brings the project into compliance with the development code, which now identifies the subject property in the surrounding area as part of the downtown area since it is now all zone M X five. The planning team received letters um letters expressing concerns with the project from the public. The primary concerns expressed by the public involve the loss of residential units within the downtown area. The building's design and height and protecting existing trees. As previously stated, the modification will not change the approved building design and height, and protecting the existing trees will remain a requirement of the D A. As for the loss of the residential units, the planning team acknowledges the need for additional housing within the downtown area. However, the request does comply with all the required findings of the development code for a D A modification. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the D A modification, C A R twenty four dash zero 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 one seven. Thank you.
Are there questions for David? All right, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Jeff Wardle. My address is two fifty one East Front Suite three ten here in Boise, and I'm counsel for the applicant in this matter. We are in agreement with the staff report and the commission's recommendation of approval. As David noted, this project was approved under the prior code, and at that time. Us a rezone to a C five necessitated a development agreement. And we went through that process, and we agreed to a development agreement. And one of the elements of that was the configuration of the various mixed-use elements. Under the modern zoning code, and as council member Stead has pointed out, we have had some changes with that code that. Changed the way we looked at things formally. But this project and everything that is west of third is now M X five. And the entirety of this block and the blocks adjoining it to the north and south are both M X five, which would have permitted. This development of right without a conditional use permit without a rezone. So. That said, the elements now for amending our development agreements are different from what they were before. And part of that is in going. The direction that this council has taken with a more form-based code. We are more focused on certain things within the code and less focused on use. And that's the reason that a development agreement was done. As staff noted, the council shall approve the application if the development agreement does not grant a land use or property right. There is no modification that is sought here that is would not otherwise be permissible under the M X five. And then it's necessary to meet to provide infrastructure, mitigate potential impacts, and bring the zoning map amendment application into compliance. We think that this is an appropriate approach. The city council has taken in development agreements, and I think you'll see fewer development agreements in the future moving forward. Because of the encouragement of the mixed use. As David noted, the only modification that we seek is to change the minimum number of units from one hundred to sixty nine. There was a provision that at least five percent of the units would be uh retained for housing choice voucher rentals. We have retained that with a fixed number of five so that that is satisfied. And as David noted, there is no physical change. In the project, the height does not change. We're not here asking for more floors. The mass does not change. We're not asking for any additional square footage. There is no change in the exterior design of the project. There is no change in the uses incorporated in the project, and there's no change in the landscaping. The only modification has to do with this uh number, minimum number of residential units. And the rationale for it and planning and zoning, as you note in their minutes. Vetted it is that we are going to convert. Units and make them larger and for sale. That said, we are committed to preserving the five units for uh for housing choice vouchers as the as the council originally required. So again, had this application come forward after December first of two thousand twenty three. We would not have required a conditional use from entered a development agreement, and there wouldn't have been any limitation. On the height, the nature of the mixed use, even the parking requirements. So with that, we are in agreement with the staff report and the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission, and we request. Your approval of this modification to that one section, and I stand for any questions.
Questions for Jeff?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, what I'll do is I'm gonna just, I'm gonna work down this list that I have, and then we'll check in online and check in in the room. Um first, and everybody gets three minutes. You'll see a clock that comes up here. Um Dan Everhart, followed by Keith Gaines, and then Susan. I'm sorry, this. The sealers, maybe? All right, go ahead.
Members of the Boise City Council, my name is Dan Everhart. I live at two hundred North Third Street, and I'm here on behalf of Better Change for East Downtown, a community coalition composed of property and business owners. Renters, neighborhood associations, and concerned citizens from across Boise. This evening, you have heard both city staff and the developer assert that this request to modify the development agreement and reduce the number of housing units is allowable under city code. You won't hear an argument from us. No doubt, this action is allowable. What you also didn't hear is why this reduction is in the interest of the neighborhood, the city, or Boiseans as a whole. That's because it isn't. It isn't a change that would benefit the neighborhood or Boise, and we ask you to deny the the request. We know that you take seriously your role in representing and defending the larger interests of our city. No doubt. The mayor was thinking of this directive in twenty twenty when she noted the need for housing and voted to break a tie vote of the council. To allow what she believed to be a housing project. No doubt you, as a council, have repeatedly de-emphasized what you considered lesser concerns when you have voted time and time again to allow a development. With a promise of solving Boise's housing shortage. Now the choice before you is to either affirm the ongoing need for housing in Boise. And deny this request to reduce the development number of housing. Units by more than a third. Or to assert that the city's housing crisis is over and approve this developer's request. We ask that you confirm your long commitment to making housing in East Downtown and Boise more accessible and deny the application to modify the development agreement. An important side note, the process to receive, review, and decide upon requests to modify the development agreement here or at any similar agreement is opaque. The developer has voiced similar concerns, and as quoted in the media, city staff has been quick to assert that steps should be taken to make the process less archaic for the developer. But no similar concern has been voiced for the neighbors. The public which stands to gain or lose much depending on the manner in which development agreements are determined and enforced. Better Change for East Downtown spent four months in frustrating correspondence with ever higher levels of bureaucracy at City Hall. But not until the media raised our concerns in the public eye did an answer come from staff. And that answer was formulated to address the interests of the developer, not the neighbors who have been asking for clarification for months. This lack of clarity and process and expectation is something that you can fix regardless of your vote on this specific request. So once again. If this reduction in housing is not in the best interest of the city and its citizens, why approve it?
Ben Mayor, I've got a question. It's not very often that somebody comes and advocates for more density in their neighborhood. Usually it's the other way around. I'm trying to figure out how this change to the D A. Has a negative impact on your neighborhood. I understand that there's less housing, and that's we would like to have more housing in Boise, and that's a good thing. But most of the time when somebody would come in, they would say this is going to be more vehicle trips per day. There's going to be more busyness in the neighborhood. There's going to be harder for people to walk and bike around. There's going to be noise. There's going to be all these things. These are arguments that we typically hear when we hear from density. Right. And typically, we don't hear someone say a less dense project that looks exactly the same is going to have a larger negative impact than a more dense. I'm having a hard time understanding. Why this is a negative outcome for how this negatively impacts the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I think you're fundamentally dealing with a different type of resident in downtown. Um we have selected downtown as the place where we live, not to avoid. Not to avoid density, but be but to embrace density, to embrace the opportunities that density brings. Additional restaurants, additional um opportunities for entertainment and shopping that can only be brought with increased housing units. Not to mention, um as studies have shown, that there is a clear correlation between a reduction in built housing units. And a reduction in rental housing costs, housing costs more generally. Specifically within a short radius of a proposed development. And so very much so. Better Change for East Downtown and our partners are concerned that the opportunities, the reduction in housing costs afforded by. A hundred units will be cut by a third. And that will have an immediate and direct impact on us, on our on our friends and on our neighbors. The rest of it goes along.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I actually do have one follow-up question. But you could you testified the first time this came around, I believe. And the first time that you testified, I believe the opposition was to the height. And I believe the opposition was somewhat to the street frontage, and it had a lot to do with the historic preservation of the surrounding neighborhood. So it doesn't seem like that's a concern anymore. Now the concern is the lack of density, or is the concern in the development in general?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, unfortunately, depending on your perspective, this this cat is out of the bag. Uh the the steel is now seventy feet in the air. We cannot stop it. The buildings that were going to be demolished and impacted have already been demolished and impacted. It makes no sense to continue an argument against this development. Based on historic preservation when that battle has been lost, decided. So I I I understand understand why your your perspective, you know, your understanding of our perspective has changed because our perspective has changed. Um and most importantly. Because there are five key concerns outlined in the development agreement. They're asking to change significantly change. One of them, twenty percent of the development agreement will be altered. The question, though they have said, we don't have any intent to change height. We don't have any intent to change design. We're not going to make other alteration. Until they ask to. Right? So. The allowance for one may not be a reason to allow the next. But it might be a foot in the door for the next thing. This all started with trees. We don't have to get into all that. But um. That part of the development agreement is not being enforced. Despite repeated requests. So so there are questions about the development agreement and its enforcement. And this change, major change to the development agreement and how it impacts the future of the other development agreement.
I appreciate you asking both of those questions. Thanks for testimony.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a follow-up question as well. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just I wanted to get kind of the pulse from you on on the neighborhood, on the makeup of. Owned units versus rentals because um just a week or two ago in local media, there was a conversation about. Uh Boise becoming a city for renters and obviously apartments. We saw huge inflation, and that that's been a big soapbox. I move mine because my apartment eleven or twelve years ago was five hundred and twenty dollars a month, and now it's over a thousand, right? Those prices change every year. There is concern about, you know, opportunities for ownership. Regardless of what price range these units are in, they will fill a need for someone uh freeing up units of housing elsewhere in the city. But I'm curious. Just kind of from your your what what kind of pulse you're seeing in your area and maybe what you think about the future in this area. Is there a ownership verse? Obviously, a mix is good, but. Do you do you see maybe more of one type than the other being built now or in the future?
Madam Mayor, uh Councilmember Morales. Our our neighborhood is very diverse in terms of the of the housing types offered. There is both a mix of for sale. Units and rented units. Within one block of this, I would say there are easily two hundred housing units, which is often forgotten by A C H D when they're doing work at two in the morning. We're denser than our north end friends and neighbors and east end friends and neighbors. So we have a lot of housing in in this neighborhood. It's hard to pinpoint. I I don't know the answer to your question about how many are rental, how many are not. I will tell you this, in a building like the Imperial Plaza where I've lived for now twenty years. The the even those units that are owned. Will also then be sub rented, right? So um it's not just as easy to say that they're condos. They are condos, but they'll also be rented uh to renters. So um affecting the mix then of 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 units. I think you could say there's no way to guarantee that the that the condo products in the I C C U Plaza. Will stay single-family owner occupied. It is possible that they'll be unoccupied for big parts of the year as it's a second home. Or it may be rented to someone um who uh who would benefit from the overall larger number in units. And the correlated um the correlated reduction in housing costs that go with it. I don't know what the development future is for our neighborhood. I am concerned that in the long run, this will just be the first. And as we've rezoned our entire side of downtown. We will see this as only only the first. It will be. Who knows what what it'll look like in in a couple of years?
Thank you for your perspective on that. And I think just my my final comment would be that, you know, I think that mix of. Type housing types is really important. Um you know, even in a in a single-family neighborhood where you have homeowner homeowner occupied and then. Rentals that that do get purchased by others. Um having that mix of housing types is really important, and there probably will be be some mix of this as well. But thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Keith Gaines, and then I'd ask that Susan um head towards the front. Um and then after Susan is Madeline Byer. Is Susan not here? Oh, you were not speaking. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. I missed that. Sorry about that.
Uh good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Keith Gaines, and I live at two hundred North Third Street. Public records. Produced by the Office of the City Attorney on December eleventh, two thousand twenty four. Revealed meeting minutes titled I C C U Tower D A mod from February second, two thousand twenty four. Where the developer was told on that date that the development agreement would need to be modified to go below a hundred housing units. Yet the developer, as described in September twenty twenty four by the city's planning and zoning manager in attendance at the February meeting, quote. Designed the entire thing and started construction in all caps on fifty to sixty units, end quote, without applying for a modification. This proves that the developer cannot be trusted and must be held accountable to the hundred housing units required. In the development agreement as well as every other condition required in their development agreement. Thank you.
All right. We've got Madeline Byer, and then after Madeline, I think it's Bron or Bron Roberts, Bron Roberts. And then Linda Anderson. Great. Welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, you can pull it down a little bit.
Thanks. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. This is my first city council.
Oh, well, I'm so glad you're here. Don't be nervous. We're all just normal people talking about the place we love, but I'm so glad you came.
Well, I'm Madeline. I live at uh twenty five twenty seven South Oahu Street. And I moved here about a year ago for work. So. Uh I actually read the entire online packet for this meeting. So I actually read the entire online packet for this meeting before I came. And this was the only issue that stood out to me because it really spoke to me that even the the council that was in charge of making the decision, I read through their testimony and even they were reluctant to give their approval. And so I just want to say, it feels like this is following the letter of the law, but maybe not quite the spirit of the law, you know? It feels like I, the city has the intentions to build denser housing, to make the downtown more of a downtown. I'm actually from San Francisco and I was there when it was beautiful. And I've seen, you know, the San Francisco Board of Trustees make decision after decision that has, you know, really ruined San Francisco. And this feels like one of them. This feels like we were promised really dense renting housing and to switch up into this other kind of housing feels like a deception of the public. And so, I don't know. I think especially, I work for Macron, so with all of the new hires coming, I really do think we need those rental buildings. I know that I would have loved to live downtown. But instead I ended up in low income housing on accident because I didn't know anything about this town. And, you know, it, it just would have been nice to have that option and yet again, it's being taken away. So, I don't know. I know that Councilmember Hallbur, Halliburton, is that how you say your name? You asked another testifier what the harm was and I was thinking about that myself. And I think it's not just, you know, everything else that everybody's talked about, but that it's taking away the real estate downtown to build denser housing when Boise does become a larger city. Because, you know, I only moved here a year ago, but I love it so much. And I see the potential for it to be a much larger city and I don't think 69 condos is accounting for that promising future. Thank you.
Thank you. I've just got an off topic question, but kind of a topic. Did you just, you're not in a class, so you didn't have to come tonight? You just read this because you wanted to?
I'm just here because I want to.
I totally love it. And I'm going to encourage you to figure out a way to get involved in the city that is now your home, that you say you love, that makes me so happy. We have so many different city commissions. And since you're talking about the importance of more housing for people of your age that are coming here for good jobs and building lives here. Also really cool group called Neighbors for Boise that worked across the city on ensuring that there's more, more housing. And it often urges us to do more. And so look them up online. I think you'd really enjoy meeting them. And if there are ways that you want to get involved in the city in the years to come, please consider it. Because it's rare that we get somebody that just doesn't live next door to the place, but picks up the packet and reads the whole thing. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it.
You'll be seeing me more often.
Great. Any questions? Any questions for Madeline?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Madeline, thank you so much. Just to go with what the mayor said also, really appreciate you having, coming out here tonight and taking your time and reading through that information. I did have a question. As you mentioned, you saw San Francisco go from a city that you loved to one that was a little less lovable. What other things did you see? Could you share with us here that contributed to that love lost?
There was definitely the prioritization of like larger chain businesses over like residential neighborhood businesses in the sense that like, my grandma has lived in the Outer Sunset since the seventies. She's always lived next to a really busy like market street. And that market street where she used to buy her groceries and her medicine and like all sorts of things, right? She's Chinese, so you know, all sorts of variety shops. Now it's all like bubble tea, you know? And I'm as big a fan as anyone, but you know, I want my grandma to be able to do her shopping when, you know, she has very limited mobility and that's kind of her only option. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bron. And then Linda and then Mary.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Bron Roberts and I live at 323 West Jefferson Street. I live across, I live in the Jefferson condos across from the big project. It's a big disappointment to me that years after the approval of the Alquis project, formerly the BVA project, that a major change is being made to the project. If people like Dan Everhart, a part of the Better Change for East Downtown or BCED had not spoken up, I don't think we would be sitting here today to review this change. And yes, I was a member of the BCED for numerous meetings in the middle of COVID at the Assay Office Park, fighting city hall to speak, hall so to speak, to preserve our neighborhood. Yes, BCED lost the battle, but as I've told friends, the decision of city council with Mayor McLean making the deciding vote was not going to ruin my day or the days and years ahead that I have remaining living in this neighborhood. My husband Jeremy and I walk the neighborhood daily and several times a day because we have a dog and live at the Jefferson condos. And just in our little hood, I can tell you there are at least three or four regular camping slash living vehicles that park around the block. The owner slash occupants of the vehicles know the rules and stay the allotted amount of time before moving to another spot. And then a couple of days later, will come back to the spot or the side of the street that they were parked on a few days earlier. We know that some of these people are people with jobs. It was very surprising to me that the housing piece of this project went from 100 apartments to 64 luxury condo units and five residential units designated for rent and made available for housing choice vouchers. The reason that Mayor McLean cast the tie vote in favor of the project is because it was going to add more housing to the downtown area. This change would decrease housing. Also, when I think of the people who are camping in their vehicles near our condo and the new project, they would have a much better chance of renting an apartment rather than buying a condo. Okay, maybe this is not the demographic that would be renting the market rate apartments or purchasing, purchasing the luxury condos, but there are other families in the community that would have a much better chance of renting rather than purchasing a condo. Letting the developer simply make changes for his own benefit should never be allowed.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I was looking, didn't look like there were any questions. Sorry. I didn't say it aloud, but I was, I was looking for sign. Sorry. Appreciate it. Sorry. I'll be more explicit the next time. Linda, welcome.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for letting us have a say in this. My name is Linda Anderson. I live in the Jefferson across the street from the project. I actually, when it was, just before it was approved, I lived right across looking at it. And another condo came up and I sold that one and moved to the other side of the building to escape it. But everyone else's didn't get to. As you know, this project did not receive a ringing endorsement from the city. It was unanimously denied by the planning commission as inappropriate for the neighborhood. When appealed to the council, there was a three, three split. And I wanted to say something to Mayor McLean, but she, I know you're tired of hearing this, but Mayor McLean broke the tie saying, I'm going to vote for this because we need.
I'm not tired of hearing it. You can all remind me, each of you.
Okay, okay. I just wonder, Madam Mayor, if you would have actually approved this project had it been 30% less housing? If it were that little, it was already only 13% of the project, the housing part. So this was way less. I, I didn't do the math, but maybe 9%. I wonder how it is possible that you could allow a major change in a carefully negotiated development agreement, which it seems would be to the detriment of the city. And to Mr. Halliburton's question, I suppose in our self-interest, maybe it would be better to have fewer cars. But I think all of us, I'm also a member of BCED, are interested in the preservation of agreements and, and what the city asks people to do. And as someone else said, what next? What, what can come next? They can say, we don't want to screen the parking with landscaping. That's too hard. I mean, and will you continue to say yes to them on anything they come back with? I mean, it's so, it's, it is a concern. There are two questions I think you should consider. One, does the city still need more housing? And two, if the answer is yes, does it need more market rate apartments or luxury million and a half, $2 million condos? Which does the city need more? And, and the condos I think will be bought by lots of Californians coming in who have sold their houses and have the cash. I urge you to deny this request and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Mary. Were you planning on speaking or were you, had you just signed up to, to voice your? Okay, thank you. Phil Anderson.
I will be short and sweet. Thank you for, I'll take maybe a minute. Okay. It strikes me.
Will you lift it? And just that way it's all read into the record. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So my name is Phil Anderson.
Welcome.
Thank you. It strikes me that there was some disagreement about the heights of the building and that got settled. And that's one of the things that the gentleman said, we're not changing the height. Okay. Otherwise, if they really wanted to win votes, I suppose of the community, they could say, oh, fewer units and we'll take off two floors. That would probably make a lot of people happy. I know that's not going to happen. But it strikes me that going the direction they're talking about is, as Linda just said, probably going to raise prices for those units that are very large. That will impact the pricing of all the other units, which strikes me means it's going to be less available for people of lower income to be able to buy into that project. I think it would be better to keep the number of units. Or if they really want to add housing, is maybe do a little restructuring since they're amenable to restructuring, but not going with fewer units and larger units, but more units and smaller units. There might be more of a demand, certainly going the direction they're going to go again, is going to have a ripple effect on the prices for the ones further down on the lower floors. Okay. So I think if we're trying to talk about providing housing for the residents in that neighborhood or for the city, that sticking with what you got now would be better than going the direction of talking about moving. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sandra Herman.
Hi there. Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. Sandra Herman, 1404 North Seventh Street. I spoke at the P and Z Commission meeting regarding this project as a NINA board member. We are concerned about the process precedent this project change represents. Tonight, I'm testifying as an independent citizen representing my own opinions. At the P and Z hearing nearby neighbors testified who were against this project originally proposed, when it was originally proposed, but are now full on yes in my backyard in this matter. They understand the need for more housing and they want to see the original proposal come to fruition, even though 30 more units means a busier neighborhood for them. There was also testimony from investors who don't live in the neighborhood, but are interested in seeing their property values improve with the adjacent potential luxury condos influencing neighborhood values. One P and Z commissioners, commissioner said that they didn't find the change from 100 to 70 units very impactful. In my neighborhood, averaging at 10 houses per block, that change represents a loss of three city blocks of housing. To further the comparison, 90, 80 US have been approved in the north end since the new zoning code. This means the homeowners of the north end will build more affordable housing units than this proposed high rise condo development. Quite literally, we are yin bees. Madam Mayor, you brought a housing policy of yes and seeking housing solutions wherever and however they came. But between this proposed project change and the dissolution of the YMCA senior housing project, it has become obvious to me that the best way to build more housing is to rely on the people of the city, not big time developers. This developer needs to stick to their promises and I implore you, implore you to pursue more solutions like issuing local investment bonds to build affordable housing or incentives for local property owners to turn Airbnbs into affordable long-term rental homes. I'll close with a personal story. My daughter is a math teacher. She did everything right hustling through college to come out debt free, driving a 2002 Camry to work every day. And still she couldn't afford to live on her own. When her roommates moved away, she ended up moving back home with us to afford her master's degree. She left Boise for a job in Barcelona, Spain 18 months ago. She lives in a tiny apartment above shops. She walks to work. It's the sort of housing not even available in our city. She makes less money, but can afford to live on her own. Last week while visiting her, she told me she intends to stay at least one more year. She said, I just want to pretend that to be an adult a while longer. Meaning she knows if she comes home, she'll either have to find more roommates again or move back in with us. Don't young professionals in our community deserve dignity of living on their own?
Time. Thank you. And thanks for those two ideas. I wrote them down. They're not the low, the, the investment bonds we've, we've tossed around. It's, it's going to be hard to do that here for a whole bunch of different reasons. But the incentivization of changing short term to long term at affordable rates is really interesting to me. So I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you. So Sandra was the last person on the list. Yeah, come on up. Anybody else? If you'll just move this direction, I'd really appreciate it. I'll have you go first.
I'm Patricia Donlop. I live at 211 West Jefferson Street. I just want to reiterate that the people live downtown because they like the density, they like the liveliness. I know I testified at the planning and zoning and said, we want more people. And the guy said, I've never heard that. And I know you don't hear it when you're doing a subdivision out in West Boise. But downtown, we want people. And I think that was a really good point, that if this had been, when it was presented four years ago, it had been presented as 69 for sale condo units, it would not have been approved because it would not have addressed the housing issue. So just to support the other testimony.
Thank you. Eric, can we go?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I thought I was on the list, so I'm glad you called me.
You know, maybe there, there might be a second sheet of paper that I don't have, so sorry about that.
No worries.
You wrote your name down somewhere.
I probably did, yeah. All right. I stand, I'm Eric Nystrom. I live in 200 North Third Street in the Imperial Plaza. I'm, I'm on the board, but I'm not representing the association. I'm representing myself as a citizen. I stand before you to ask you to vote against the modification request of 200 North Fourth Street project to reduce the number of residential units from 100 to 69. Because in addition to reducing the unit count, the developers intend to change the units from for rent to for sale, as they've said tonight. The developers' modification is being requested because the project as originally approved does not pencil out. May I remind the body, the majority of the public who submitted written and verbal testimony were against this project from the beginning. The size and mass of which is grossly out of scale in the neighborhood. Moreover, the mayor broke with the majority of planning and zoning, as well as half the city council, by approving this project to move forward. The rationale given at the time was Boise needs affordable housing in the downtown area. Yet, reducing the number of units by a third to then charge nearly $1 million per unit does not align with that rationale. Not in my view. According to the current narrative from our city leaders, there is still a housing crisis. It should go without saying that developers assume the risk associated with these ventures. The project as originally approved stipulated the minimum number of residential units. Citizens expect city to enforce zoning and project rules established, not bend to developers when they find their grand scale projects do not pencil out. As a citizen and resident owner in the median vicinity, the project under construction has never penciled out. Had this been a 69 unit condominium development from the beginning, perhaps the structure could have been designed with a more appropriate and acceptable scale. The developer modifications, should they be allowed, would only add insult to injury. This extremely oversized structure brings This extremely oversized structure brings with it the consequences of reduced sightlines and property values. The modifications requested do nothing to support the extreme housing need in Boise, for which Madam Mayor, you have requested or represented. Please note vote no and reject these project modifications and hold the public trust in your original decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Schafield and I live downtown. Members of the council and mayor, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm speaking against the changes that Mr. Alkis wants to make to the project. I attended all of the meetings before the start of the building. I listened to what they said, what they did and what they say they would do. And it didn't always, and they didn't always do what they promised. I am a renter. I live downtown. I will be directly affected by this change in the number of units available that are now for sale and not for rent. That is a 30% decrease in the amount of units available. Studies have shown, and we all know that supply and demand, the more you have to rent, the lower the price. I, again, am a renter. I cannot continue to afford to live in a place that has large, very unaffordable owner apartments. And then the owners turn around and ask us to rent them. Again, it was approved with 100 rental units. It is now 69 for sale units. That's a 30% reduction. This makes my rent higher. And if this continues, people like this young woman who is here, she will not be able to afford to live in downtown Boise how she wanted. Yes, we are asking for more renters. We are asking for renters. Renters make the city. When this was approved, you said you wanted more renters. You wanted people to live downtown. The only way you can do that is making rent affordable for people to live downtown. And five affordable units in a 69 building that has high for sale value is not going to make a lot of renters come downtown. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify? I'm going to check online. Is anybody online? Do we have further questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, I've got a question for staff.
Great. We'll take those now and then I'll take closing arguments and then I'll close the public hearing.
You may not know the answer to this. I think, was Cody the one who presented on this originally in 2020?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, it was either Cody or Saleem might have been.
Yeah, so in my memory, this came in front of council. It was really tall. And we said, that's too tall. And then it came back in front of council and the height was lowered. And then there was a lot of discussion about getting in and out of the building. And there was a lot of discussion about what the outside envelope was going to look like. Elaine did a lot of designing from the dais to change the way that that was going to look from the outside. And there was a lot of discussion around it. And there was a really large challenge in the discussion because there was some plans where things didn't quite make sense because we hadn't expanded the downtown area to this area yet. And so we didn't always allow this height in that area. But we had the Imperial Plaza that was right next to it, that we had also made an exemption. And so there was a conflict that there was an old plan that hadn't been updated, that we typically didn't allow those heights. Does that ringing any bells?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that sounds familiar. I think you're on the, you're summarizing it correctly.
Yes, and so in the decision-making, I believe one of the large challenges for staff was that we were operating off of an old plan that didn't allow this height in this area. And that that was a challenge for some staff. What I'm hearing you say now is that if this development came forward now, that height would be allowed. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that is correct. It's MX-5, there's no height limit in that.
There's no height limit. It could be even taller now.
Yes.
And if it was brought forward now, it wasn't. But if it was brought forward now, there would be an unlimited height and we wouldn't get to decide how many units were actually in there.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that is correct. The designer, through design review, building, facades, things of that nature, landscape, it could be decided but not used. Provide, because most things are allowed in the MX-5 zone.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to remember some of how that conversation went. And I remember the really big sticking point is that we had some conflicting plans. And one plan that was pretty ambiguous that said, because of the historic nature of that area, we weren't allowing that height. But then we also had the Imperial Plaza where we had allowed that height before. Now there's a new plan in place. And when they originally came to us, that a height was a taller height and they actually came down on that height. So I'm just trying to remember some of those things. But now with our new modern zoning code, those would not be issues. So here's another question. If they aren't able to develop, if we were to deny this amendment to development agreement tonight, where would they be? What could they do? Would they, could they reapply under the new modern zoning code? Like, what would their options be going forward? Like, develop this unit only or is that their only option if we were to deny it?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, they couldn't really reapply. The development agreement runs with the property and it's tied to the property. So regardless, they would have to modify the development agreement in some form. It's part of the zone.
Great, so that's how it would end up coming back with, of course, is at some point a modification to development agreement?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can you maybe walk me through, how did we land on 100 instead of 125 or 90? Why that number?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I don't know the specifics on why 100 was settled at the time and when this was originally decided. I wasn't there at that.
Yeah, what I would say is perhaps the applicant gave that answer because they ran with it, but it was the proposal that came. That was not something, if I remember correctly, that Elaine managed from the dais. It was the request from the applicant.
Was the 100? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, and going back to the minutes and going back to, yeah, the minutes in the transcript. And maybe this is for you or maybe this is for legal. I believe that the development agreement that Elaine did ask for was the housing choice vouchers.
Yes.
Not, and it wasn't an ask for the amount of units. It was just for the housing choice vouchers. The unit was actually presented by the developer. Maybe the developer can confirm that.
Yes, I'll confirm that. And part of the development agreement and the suggestion from the dais that became part of the development agreement was that 5% of the units, of the number proposed, which was 100, would be for super low-income Boiseans with housing choice vouchers. And that part remains part of this, even though it's not 5%. It's the hard number of five that was landed upon in the original agreement.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
David, my question is, how many floors of residential units are we expecting in this development?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I don't know that answer offhand. I think the applicant probably have a better, better answer for that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Similar question for Dave. Do you know the number of parking units attached to this project?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I don't know the exact number, but it was parked appropriately for the zone at the time. So they were required to park it as per the legacy code.
And so that means more parking than would be required today?
That is correct, yes.
Perhaps the applicant can give you that number too, Councilmember Morales. And we can do that in Q and A if you need the extra couple of seconds. Anything else? All right, you're welcome to come up for closing comments. Oh, I'm just going to pause you for a second. Do you want to do that at the end or beforehand?
I can ask now. Great, I think so, okay. Madam Mayor, thank you. I just had a question for the applicant. So there was a lot of-
Actually, just for, I'm going to ask you to do it at the end, if it's not addressed, just for regular process stuff. Yeah. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, again, Jeff Wardle, 251 East Front. Appreciate the questions and the discussion that the council has had. I want to address some of the concerns that you've heard articulated tonight. And I think that Councilmember Hallie Burton has an excellent memory because this project was taller. This project originally had a mix of different types of uses. And certain uses, certain units were removed to reduce the height of the project. And the 100 was based upon the assessment of what we came in with as we were talking with staff and in the negotiations and discussions with members of council. It was, it was the request of Councilmember Clegg that at least 5% of the units be designated housing choice voucher eligible. Now, the development agreement requires a minimum of 100 units. Does not specify whether they're for rent or they're for sale. Yes, we have made a determination to make the bulk of these, approximately 64, for sale units. And I understand the concerns, but we're not here to relitigate issues. And it is, you know, looking back four years ago, I mean, Councilmember Hallie Burton hit it right on the head. There were a lot of voices here saying they would support these if they were for sale. So I think that we're losing sight of, A, what the standards are for modifying development agreements under the Boise City Code. Two, we're losing sight of the fact that the multifamily element of this project, even with a reduction from 100, a minimum of 100 units to 69 units, still has a per acre density of almost 60 units to the acre, if you include the entire site. And it approaches 100 units to the acre, if you just take into consideration that the bulk of these units are located on the northern portion of the site, which was a surface parking lot. So we had no housing. There was no one living on this site. You had two office buildings and a surface parking lot. So we're actually going from zero units in a surface parking lot to 69 housing units. And yes, there were statements made, there were discussions, it was contentious. But this council has made additional policy decisions that, as your staff indicated, if this application were to come forward today, it would not have any height limitation. It would have no requirement for parking. It would have no requirement for it being, having a housing component. So we're not seeking modifications and for anything other than that one provision. And then Dan and his colleagues can rest assured that you're not going to let us modify the building permit that has been issued to modify it in any way that's inconsistent with the development agreement. That's why we're here, making this single request. There's nothing in Boise City Code and nothing that specified whether these were to be for rent or for sale. Yes, market forces and some changes have changed our analysis on it. And that's why we're requesting the modification, reducing the number, the minimum number of residential units to 69, while ensuring compliance with the standard that Councilmember Clegg expressed for housing voucher available, choice availability. To the question posed by Councilmember Nash, this, it's hard to say exactly how many floors there are because there's elements of five floors of multifamily in the southern office tower. There is multifamily along the eastern facade on the northern parcel. And then there's six stories of multifamily on top of the parking garage. So you have three separate elements that come together in this project. The question that was posed about the number of parking stalls, I believe the number is 470. And if you remember, as Councilmember Hallie Burton certainly does, I called this Schrodinger's parking garage because we heard that it was simultaneously too large and too small. With the reduction to 69 units, the parking remains the same. There remains parking that could be a catalyst in the neighborhood just because you're going to have slightly different times there. But we believe that we have satisfied the requirements of Section 4D3 of the Development Agreement section.
Time.
Standards set forth in there. And we request your approval. And I stand for any additional questions.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have one question. So there has been, I heard from several different residents tonight about, it was going to be market rate apartments and now it's going to be luxury condos. But can you confirm for me, will those, I mean, those will still be market rate condominiums, right?
Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilpro time's dead. I think there has been a lot of revisionary history about what the housing types were going to be here. We never said it was going to be low income housing. We never said it was going to be anything other than addressing the affordability concerns as addressed by Councilmember Clegg. And yes, the fact of the matter is, is that these will be for sale at what the market will bear for owner occupied condominiums.
And sorry, one more question, Madam Mayor. And it was still, it was the affordable units has not changed.
The number of affordable units has not changed and the commitment to make those available to rent has not changed.
Thank you.
Jordan, Councilmember Morales? Great.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on the parking. I appreciate that, Jeff. I know some of this parking is obviously for the office purposes and whatnot, but obviously that's nearly seven units of parking per condo. And so are there thoughts that some of that parking could be public? So anyone could come in and pay for an hour or something like that? Have you gotten to that point in the process?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, just to clarify, that this is a several hundred thousand square foot mixed-use project. You have office, you have retail, you have residential. It is contemplated that parking spaces will be made available and designated for residential use on a 1.1 stall per residential use is where we're kind of coming out in the math, which means that 2/3 of the parking stalls or more than 2/3 of the parking stalls in the garage are dedicated to the mixed-use users. And yes, it is the intention to operate it as a public, as an open to the public facility, although not part of the Park Boy system.
Great, thank you. That's exactly what I was curious about because obviously with the modern zoning code, we reduced the parking minimum requirement from two units, yeah, two parking stalls per unit to one. And so in an area like this, where we've had a lot of neighbors talk about the kind of lifestyle that you live downtown, I think that's more than appropriate. And so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? We've had a couple of comments from the public saying that they want density downtown because it adds retail, it adds jobs, adds coffee shops, it adds restaurants. Most of the conversation we've had is about the 69 units. And I think that you just mentioned a little bit about some of the other stuff would be there. Can you just make sure that we have an understanding of what will be going on in the building?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, as approved by the design review and as approved by this body previously, there is ground floor activation on all four corners of the building with retail and commercial uses on three of the corners and then the entrance to the residential component on the northwest corner. There is an extensive landscaped buffer all along the eastern boundary that preserves those large historic trees and provides a greater than required setback. Then there are six floors of office. And so it is a mixed-use project. It is not just about the multifamily element. It's about how all of those pieces come together with the intention that there is active uses on the street level. That's part of the reason that we, at the suggestion of some of the neighbors that we relocated it so that the vehicular access is off of Idaho Street, which is already a one-way street to make it safer with right in, right out of that parking garage. It's also a recognition that we don't want to have too much parking, but you need to have enough parking to provide a catalyst. And in light of the nature of this project and the proposed uses, we think we have an appropriate balance there. And based upon our experience in operating other parking garages in the downtown, we think that there will, it will benefit adjoining parcels in the future. So there are office space. There is bank retail. There is general restaurant and retail available. There are a variety of uses that, again, are occupying what had been a low-rise building and a surface parking lot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, my question is about the development agreement and specifically-
I want you, could you speak to the fairness of us limiting how high you can go up and mandating the number of units? I guess I'm trying to do my best to respect what is in the development agreement, which was negotiated rather contentiously, and there was a lot of public feedback about the height. I really respect a lot of the testimony that I've heard here today, which I really liked, which is very encouraging about we want to address the supply crisis that we have that's contributing to the affordability crisis. But I would feel more inclined to hold you to 100 units if we gave you more flexibility in what this building could look like. I wonder if you could just speak to that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, we are not here to relitigate design decisions that were made three years ago. We're not here asking for any modification to the exterior of the building. We eliminated height to address the concerns. We changed the design to address the concerns. Councilmember Clegg also had extensive guidance to us that was incorporated for how to buffer and soften elements of the project. We made specific additional commitments as to the signage package when approved by the Design Review Committee. So we're not here to ask for more height. We're not going to ask for more height. And if my client were to say, we're going to ask for more height, I'm on vacation that week. I'm not going to have this conversation. Now, if we had brought this application forward on December 2nd of 2023, all of the fight and discussion and objections that you heard would have been irrelevant and would have been, there would have been no basis to entertain any of them. We would have had to comply with design standards, but we could have gone to an unlimited height. We could have provided no parking. We could have provided no mixture of housing with these commercial uses. So we think that this balances, this balances the needs and at 100 units, the the project is what it is, and there's no exterior modification. Really, this is an interior modification of where some of your unit walls will go.
Madam Mayor. Jeff, thank you very much for presenting and providing history for some of us who are new and maybe didn't sit through as the extensive discussion as many in the audience have and been a part of this. I guess I'm looking at, as we say, we're not going to relitigate. The development agreement does not ask for certain size of units. And it doesn't ask for a certain number of parking spaces. But what we're here to take a look at tonight is what it does ask for is 100 units. And and I think we all need to keep that in mind, is that there's one issue on the table today is whether or not to grant that change that while if it was issued under the new modern zoning code, it wouldn't be an issue, but it is an issue because it wasn't. It was under our old zoning code. So I mean, I know if we were to add new elements to the development agreement today, I believe you'd be contentious to say, hey, if we wanted it this size or more trees. But when it's just removing, that seems to be the
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, and again.
And then I'll take this as the last comment and then we're going to wrap this up.
And I think Councilmember Halliburton hit it right on the head that when the application was processed and the discussion was about housing units, the mathematical focus that was articulated by former Council President Clegg was on how many units will we assure are available for housing choice vouchers. And the total number of housing units was was variable. We presented you a design that had 150. We presented a design that had something less. We presented a design with with 100. So the key was ensuring that this was going to be a mixed income project that had elements that we would preserve for rent. So normally, if we were here asking for development agreement modification, we would be talking about some physical change of the exterior of the building. But that's not what we're asking. What we're talking about is what do these units look like on the inside? What is the minimum number that has to be provided? And with that, I would request your support for our modification.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, take a motion and discussion.
Madam Mayor. I can make a motion on this one. I was here when we did the original one. I move that we approve CAR 24-17 modification of development agreement to reduce the minimum required number of residential units from 100 to 69 located on approximately 1.19 acres in an MX 5 DA zone.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I appreciate everyone. I I'm fairly certain I've seen most of you before during this series of events, and it was a series of events. It originally came in front of council and council pro tem stem experienced this as well. I think it came in front of planning and zoning. Originally came in front of council and it was going to be really tall. And it was going to be really tall in an area where we weren't really allowing really tall buildings because we had an old plan for that area of town that said that we don't allow that tall of buildings. And while I think that it was contentious, I also think that that council did a really good job about thinking about the future of Boise, trying to put some things in place to encourage affordable housing, which is really challenging for us to do. I think Council President Clegg at the time did a really good job at designing the outside of the building. I'm sure she'll love it when she walks by and say, hey, I made it look exactly like this in front of a live audience. And it was, it was, it was a challenging decision and it was a split decision. And I remember voting for it, voting on it. And the largest problem that I had was that I didn't feel like it was a predictable development pattern because we had a plan that said that we didn't allow this. And during that testimony, and I tried to forget as much as I can from 2020, but I remember a lot of this pretty well. I wanted to make sure that if we had a plan that we either needed to change that plan or we needed to vote against it. Well, we have a different plan now. And we did go, we did, we did change that plan. We changed the zoning in this area. Still offering housing for a community in a part of town that needs that density. It offers a lot of office spaces. It offers retail. It offers jobs for a lot of people. It offers parking spots for a lot of the folks that are going to be using it. And then the original application, what was happening inside the building wasn't the main issue. There were some issues with people, how they were going to pull in and how they're going to pull out, but we took care of all those things. The main issue was the height. And the main issue was the size of the building on the floor and how that was going to affect the historic nature of that neighborhood. That's not changing. Even if they came in front of us with a different development agreement that wasn't this one, it's still going to be that height. It's still going to be that face on the floor. And that was the thing that the neighborhood was pushing back against at the time and for good reasons. And that was the the decision that the council made. I would love to see more units there. I would love to see more units in different parts of town. And frankly, in an earlier meeting, had I not tried to reduce the height, we probably could have had more units there in the first place. But that's something that I did with concerns that I heard from the neighbors was to try to go shorter. We're still getting the density. We're still getting so many things that we need in this town. We're still honoring some of the major aspects of the development agreement, development agreement. And so I think it makes sense to continue moving forward with this. And what I would also ask with the developer is that we continue to work on saving the trees in those areas and taking that very seriously. We know that there's concerns from the neighbors about the trees in that areas. And I think that that's something that we need to do. And I think we need to make sure that we're also addressing noise in the area and construction and areas outside of the construction period. That's it.
Madam Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Halliburton for that. I'll be supporting motion for much of the same reasons. I would be more inclined to hold the developer to the 100 units had we not been so restrictive on form in the existing development agreement. So trying to avoid relitigating what a lot of work went into a few years ago. So short of that, if we're putting severe restrictions on what a building can look like, how high it can go and so forth, I'm more reluctant to hold feet to the fire on number of units in this situation. But I just want to say how grateful I am for all the testimony that we had tonight. It's the kind of testimony that I want to hear and it feels like folks in this part of town have a very clear vision for the city that is highly consistent with the things that we are trying to do here and balance these interests on form and function in this part of town and all over. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, first, I'm so grateful to my neighbors who came out to participate in this process tonight. I served as a volunteer on the Planning and Zoning Commission when, at the time that this first came to the city. And I remember, like Councilmember Halliburton mentioned, I also remember much of the, many of the neighbor concerns at that time. And I think some of them might be some of you. I often say that what I love about Boise is our, and what I even love about the new zoning code is the encouragement of a diversity of housing options. That includes multifamily, single, single, multifamily, single family homes, duplexes, everything in between. It also includes naturally occurring affordable housing and also luxury residences. Condominiums are a really important part of that housing ecosystem, and they're really difficult to build in the state of Idaho because of some state laws that are in place. So we don't have very many condominiums in the city of Boise. I do think that the city does what we can with the tools that we have to incentivize affordable housing, density, a diversity of housing options. But not everybody wants to own a single family home, and it doesn't mean that they don't want ownership at all. I think that this is just another one of those housing options that we're able to offer to residents and one that is in short supply because they're difficult to build in this state. I'm grateful for the vibrancy that this overall project will add, and I am passionate about mixed use, which we're seeing actually a lot less of than I think we would have hoped to see over the years. It mostly is residentially focused now, and we do need residences. We know that. We also need vibrant neighborhoods where with walkability and access to jobs and coffee shops. I want that for every neighborhood in Boise. And so I think that this will really bring a lot of life to this side of the downtown. I will add that just, this is for the applicant. I, just this week, I've had two complaints from neighbors in the neighborhood about construction happening out of hours, out of the approved hours in the permit. So I wanted to mention that. I hope that we don't hear that again. Please bring that back to the builders. Thank you so much. But so with that said, I will be supporting the motion.
We'll go Councilmember Willetts, then Morales, and then Corles.
Thanks. First of all, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for spending your Tuesday evening with us. It's one of the things that I really appreciate about our community is that people care and that they're willing to put in the time just out of curiosity to read, you know, thousands of pages of of documents and that that you care about what your neighborhood looks like and that you care about what's available to others. So thank you. It's been said in a couple of different ways here, but one of the things that I'm really passionate about is that we need choices. We need choices for single family homes. We need choices for multifamily homes. We need choices for people to buy. We need choices for people to rent. And it's really important that the city allows these things so that there are choices. And I didn't get a chance to to talk to the gentleman, but I did read the entire report that he had applied about market forces. And I I believe it. I think we need, we need more housing to to ensure that costs can go down. But I'd like us to keep, excuse me. I'd like us to keep in mind the bigger picture here. It is not as many units as y'all would want. But it is more units than occurred before the project, which was zero. So I'm going to be supporting the motion. I think what we're getting out of this is we're getting, we're getting some rentals. We're getting some opportunities for folks to buy. And at the end of the day, we're getting more folks in a great neighborhood. And I'm just thrilled that more people can have the opportunity to live and work in Boise. And I'll be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to echo my thanks to everyone that's there tonight. I'm sorry I'm not with you tonight with a sick household, but I did want to speak on a few things. It's hard to balance property rights, the market and our desires for for more housing. But I want to thank you for coming out to talk about this from a housing crisis perspective. It was really, really refreshing. We do need more housing in America where millions of units pined and even in Boise. Yeah, we're not meeting our goal of 2,000 units a year. So if I could make 31 more units economical for this local developer, I would, but we can't do that from up here. But I am having a little bit of deja vu tonight because earlier last year, we had a development modification request to reduce housing project by 31 units from 31 to zero for an office that 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 prior project never penciled for that developer. But we have to, you know, handle those property rights and what can be built outside of hypothetical desires that we have. And I am grateful that in this case, 69 units will be built here. It provides an important influx of housing vibrancy to this neighborhood, many new neighbors that you'll get to know and the establishments that you love in this area. You know, this reduction, just to be clear, because it came up a few times tonight, does not mean the housing crisis is ebbing or over. There is more to do. It's why last year we approved multifamily on Maple Grove and Overland and others as part of a 3,500 unit master plan community in South Boise, both over numerous objections of density from residents. And it's why every single family home can now build an ADU to double density in a pretty gentle way and appreciates the testimony on that tonight. There's always more to do, but as a friend of mine often says, everything counts, everything matters. We're adding 69 units with opportunity for ownership that will matter. And so this does do something for our housing crisis. And beyond those five affordable rentals, it's 69 more homes. And so grateful for the opportunity to be able to support this tonight and for the work going into this project.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your voices are heard and they do matter. And it's really exciting to hear people come out to advocate for more housing. It's not something we hear often. I think a little bit, I don't know if we talked about it as much as we should have, but the only discussion for tonight was the reduction in a set development agreement from 100 to 69. The development agreement was clear, I think, that the city provided, and I think that the developers saw that. I think this is going to be a wonderful development. But I can't help to express my disappointment with the proposed change to the agreement, reducing that by over 30%. As we continue to face a housing shortage, truly, every unit does matter. I appreciate their support of keeping the five affordable housing voucher units. Those are critically needed for Boise and but again, we are at a loss. But with that, I understand that our city code, which is what we need to follow, does allow for this type of modification to the development agreement. So I will reluctantly be supporting this modification tonight.
Madam Mayor, I know we're rich on comments tonight, but if I could just make one more, I don't think we should understate the value of these housing choice vouchers on this project. I've been on council for five years. And as far as I can remember, this is the only develop agreement that we've ever had where we conditioned housing choice vouchers into the development, and that was something that the developer agreed with to include. You wouldn't have to have agreed to that. And so I appreciate you bringing that forward as an option. I appreciate you agreeing with that. And I guess I would encourage future developers to come forward knowing that there is a shortage and that there is a way to make some of these units more affordable and more attainable through this housing choice voucher system. So I appreciate that willingness to not only include that in the first, but also sticking with that number, even though that there was a percentage reduction.
All right. Thanks, everybody. I won't be voting tonight. I just want to thank all of you for being here and let you know a couple of things. Bron, I think it was Bron that brought up, there's a couple of things I intend to follow up on. And we talked about folks parking and camping. I want to make sure that we've connected them with services to understand their needs. So thanks for flagging that because that's not something that's been flagged for me in your neighborhood. I appreciate it. And Sandra, the housing ideas, if you've got more, please email me. L McLean, cityboise.org. I really like that you brought those and good to hear that BCEB, I think it's East Boise. Is that right? East, better change for east. downtown BCED is advocating for more housing in the downtown area in your neighborhood. Look forward to working with you on that because yes, we need more homes for Boiseans of all walks of life. I'm going to pass this over to the clerk to call the roll.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I, no discussion. Just kidding.
Opposed? We're adjourned.